Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
We're recording.
Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the June 5th, 2023 meeting of the school committee. We call it meeting to order at 6:35. This meeting is being both audio and videotape this evening, and I would certainly ask that we all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will roll call it. Amy, would you like to start these?
Sure.
Amy Delante.
Elizabeth Marcin Boucher.
Antonella Rochella.
Gregory Thompson.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Sarah Trullio.
Pamela Blair, assistant superintendent for business.
Samantha Velazquez, secretary.
Thank you all. And in addition to our agenda, we have one of our members' final meetings evenings. We wanted to recognize our very good friend Beth. Last meeting tonight.
It is, and this time it's the last one.
Except for billing.
We'll see in the year, yeah.
No, no, I'm happy. I'm happy I was here for COVID. You know what I mean? Because I think somebody knew coming in for COVID, it would have been, well, you kind of, both you and Antonella kind of got hit with that a little bit. You had a year, but.
Now, this is presented to Elizabeth Boucher. Thank you for your 12 years of service and dedication to ELPS. June 26, 27, because that's our final meeting.
Final meeting.
June 26, 2023.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Speech at graduation, like it kind of came at the same time as you.
I know.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, with the grad, the kids were graduating.
I'm going out too?
No, no, thank you. Yep.
Amy, not to visit pools anymore?
That's right. Well, Beth, it's certainly been a pleasure having you as part of this committee and certainly have appreciated your honesty and your dedication to the, to the students of the district. So, you know, thank you for all of your time and efforts.
Thank you.
For, for the schools. Good luck. Yeah. Okay, we will move along with approval of some minutes. Let's take a motion, please.
We need to approve the May 22nd, 2023 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Antonella, who wasn't here.
Second.
Second by Amy. Any other discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. And one abstention, four zero one. You can still move it. That wouldn't, if we weren't out of order, I would just make it a point.
Oh.
Fine, you did it. It's correct. Um, next up.
Move to approve the May 22nd, 2023 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah.
My second.
Second by Beth. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries, where are you at on this?
I wasn't there.
Oh, so you're abstaining?
Yeah.
And one abstention?
Yeah.
Four zero one.
I was like, it's the same day.
I'm catching up. Committee and subcommittee communications. Amy, would you like to start again?
Sure, I just want to update. I, I mentioned this last time, but the, um, the process for the, for interviewing the candidates for Lower Pioneer Valley are under, underway and we're interviewing more candidates tomorrow. So I just wanted to.
Oh, wow. It's going well.
Process so far, it's going very.
I feel like what you see.
Um, I've, yeah.
Yeah, that's good. That's good to hear.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, went to the graduation and it was a pretty cool event. Of course, my kid graduated, so that helps. But it always is very moving to see the kids, um, and what they've accomplished and hear them speak on behalf of the students. So it wa, it was a nice day, really was.
The student speakers were excellent.
The student speakers were excellent. They always are, but yeah, certainly phenomenal. And I could see your smile from far away up stage, so.
Yeah.
Glad you enjoyed it.
Yeah, no, it was fun.
Yeah. Antonella.
Uh, Eleaf is having their celebrity bartender event tomorrow.
Tomorrow, are you going?
Toritos. I don't know. I think I'm gonna try to go.
It's big election night if no one.
I know.
So, could vote?
Who's running?
I don't even know. People should vote, yes.
People should go out and vote.
And what time is the celebrity bartender event at Toritos?
It starts at five.
Okay, and there's a bunch of different, I saw a few, a list of folks, so. Okay. Great, thank you. Sarah.
Um, Amy and I, last week, two weeks ago maybe, attended the diversity and equity steering committee alongside of Gordon and, um, Heather. Um, it was a great kind of re-acquaintance of the, of the committee. We went through kind of a projection of where we've been, where we are, and where we're headed. And, um, had some really great student representation as well. We had sixth graders joining, um, the team and really offering their perspective and they, I think that's the youngest students that have ever participated.
Sixth graders, oh, wow.
Yep, yep, there was two sixth graders. They were fantastic.
They really were, yeah. They're part of our, um, anti-bias, anti-racist club at the middle school and they wanted to, we, we needed students and so we reached out to the advisor and two sixth graders and they led the discussion.
They did.
They really?
Yeah, they did.
That's a, yeah.
Told what to do. They were certainly leaders, as were all the students, but
That's great.
it was a really great cross-section of stakeholders from faculty members to families, to, um, students, to representation from central office to the committee. So it was a wonderful kind of re-emergence into the work. So looking forward to that.
Excellent. Thirteen is our next one?
Yes.
Hey, your homework, remember?
Yes.
I'm sending out a reminder. Okay, thank you, Sarah. Um, just want to let everyone know Gordon and I went and looked at a pool today.
Not for us.
No. For the district, yeah. We were at West Springfield High School and looked at their pool with the architects and engineers.
Yeah, it was really good. They did a really nice job.
Yeah, we would like that school if we could have it.
If we could have it.
Yeah.
The, the way they set up the pool into the gym, how they're connected, uh, so you can isolate one site if you need to, make them connected if you need to, uh, so it can be used for many different things. It's great to see.
Yep, so we're moving forward with that. Okay, we opportunity for readers seeing none tonight. We have an update on this feasibility study and building project. I had simply asked that we put this on to some, to remind, um, folks out there on basically the November vote, um, having conversations with folks around town. They don't all know it, so if we could do our best to spread the word about that, I know we are already, but, um.
The other thing, um, i- if people are, if you're, you're receiving questions and, um, you're able to answer some, but there are some that maybe are more in-depth, please steer them my way. Uh, you can also steer them to the website because we're making changes to the website so that it has up-to-date, uh, information in terms of what was the last meeting or in this case, what was the last forum? And so we have better links to bring us right to the Elcat video for the May 18th forum. May 18th, is that what I want to hear?
Sounds right.
And so I've been letting people know about that, just, you know, if they're asking me a question and sometimes that's the question, hey, I missed the forum, where can I find that link?
And that's through the town website on the school page, so eastlongmeadowma.org, or gov.
Yeah, yeah, if you go to eastlongmeadowma.gov.
And go to the school.
And then just go to school. In the middle of the school's page, you see ELHS Building Project and it'll take you right there.
Perfect.
And tomorrow, the, on the seventh, they have the 2:30, 4:30. Is it in the library here for the charrette?
Yes.
On energy, and they want all ages, right?
Anybody who's interested in sustainability, um, eco-friendly, um, energy, uh, processes, that's, that's what they're trying to look at, yeah, so.
Yeah, and that's open to the public, as you said, uh, for input, yeah.
Students.
That's why it's at students.
You know, seniors, anybody.
Yep. Okay, easy enough on that. We have 7.1, discussion on a possible new cellphone policy.
So, uh, in your packets, uh, you have a few cellphone policies that are from area schools and, uh, the top one is ours and then it's just alphabetical. It goes, um, Agawam, Chickapine. We have Hampden, Wilbraham. That's not really their policy, but it's, uh, what their language that they have in their handbook, I believe. It's similar to the language you see in the other policies. You have Ludlow and then you have, um, Springfield's. And all of them seem to be very similar in that, um, they all have language regarding instructional day, uh, that phones really need to be off and away during classroom instruction. Some go a little bit further. I think it's Springfield's that, uh, bans the phones in terms of they need to be off and completely away throughout the entire day. What I did find, uh, unless there are questions just on the policies themselves, when I was searching around and talking with different superintendents, no one seemed to have a policy that talks specifically or speaks specifically to phone pouches. However, they do have practices, uh, most of them pilots this year where they are either at their high school level saying, okay, all classrooms, we're gonna have a pouch or, uh, to me, it looks like a shoe tree, but anyway, it's, uh, it's kind of like a phone holder. It is not, it is a phone holder and all classrooms have it. And then at the start of class, as students come in, they put their phones in there and they leave them in there for class and they can pick them up um, as they leave. That seems to be going on, um, I believe at Hampden, Wilbraham. So it's Minichog High School. I don't know if it's gone down to the middle school. They only spoke really about the high school. Seems to be going on in Agawam. And, um, you had told me, uh, Antonella, that it might be going on at Central High School as well.
They did the pouches, those magnetic pouches are coming.
Take it to the further.
Yeah, they did, they tried, they piloted that this year.
Okay, because I can't see how this one works.
Which one?
They have in their pocket, but it's off the way.
I think that's probably why they're going.
Springfield.
In the policies, a lot of the policies, so.
I think at the middle schools, it's just not, it's not there. It's i- in Hampden, um, because we got our little middle school. They're not allowed to have it.
They don't do the, their shoe tree.
No, no, they, they might at Wilbraham Middle, but at the, the Hampden one, the kids are just not allowed to have it, so.
So the, our thought was, is I think you would have, um, and I didn't poll the staff of both schools, but, um, in just talking briefly with, uh, the leadership team, I think middle and high school probably would be in favor of trying something like this if we wanted to put an addendum or some language that says basically, we're piloting this year that in classrooms, uh, at the start of class, all students who have cellphones will be putting them, and they're numbered. So we'll buy one for each classroom and basically a number, I think the ones we saw, you know, one through 30. So you can assign at the beginning of the year, your students, okay, you're number one, you're number two, and so everybody knows where their phone's going. Um, and it just becomes part of the routine. And we'll see how that goes. And, um, enforcement obviously becomes then both teacher's obligation to set the routine, but then if students are not following and after redirection, redirection, then it becomes a situation the office can handle. I can put something together, if that's the direction the committee would like to go for the next meeting, for your review, and if that's a pilot you would like to go with, we could have it in place. That would allow us time for purchasing and get those, uh, in place for August.
I think the student reps, I was surprised they were for that, especially for, you know, certain groups, they were for it.
Well, not for, but I think they felt it was good.
They understood it. They definitely understood.
Getting one of those pouches that they fear.
The lock.
Having chicken be all, yeah, now, that was just like, um.
I, I do think in the end, and, and you're right, they understood it and they all spoke, uh, really well to the idea. I, I think it was Ashley who said it. It's really going to come down to the culture and relationship that's set day one or starting to be established day one in every classroom. And so that's something that we need to talk about, um, as a district, just, you know, setting that tone, hey, yes, we're doing this, but it, this is a a cumulative effort, because if you're not setting that tone and then you're just sending kids to the office because they are you know, not putting their phone in or they're constantly over by the phone tree, you know, looking at their phone or whatever it may be.
The only thing is managing the watches, because they've all got the watches too, but you're not really watching things on it. You might see if you get a text. Um, you know, I don't know if, like, how, how they're even gonna watch. They might just let that go.
Well, but if the idea is not to have the phone, isn't that the same?
It is the same.
Their watch should go in the pouch.
Yeah, we hadn't gone that far.
Well, but otherwise, they're all gonna work around it. They're gonna be like, oh, this is.
But if the teachers are backed by.
Speak on your watch.
Sure you can.
Sure you can.
You can do everything. It's just like the phone. That's just what I'm saying. It's.
I can't speak on.
So maybe we don't allow them.
We just don't know how.
I just don't know how. Okay.
Maybe they're just not allowed in the building or something. I don't know. Cause our point is to not have digital communications other than their Chromebook in front of themselves. And then why would we allow the watch and not the phone?
Unless that's something where the teacher has the backing of the school committee slash administration, that if they see it, they can look at the student and go, you've been warned to put it in the pouch. And then they don't have to worry about it unless they have somebody who's not.
Right. I, I think you may want to start with the phone.
Yeah.
I, I think if you jump right to, okay, we're, we want to take the watch and the phone and put everything, you're gonna have a little bit harder time just getting the pilot off the ground.
I think too, so the watches are hard to distinguish some of the younger students. Like I know some kids who bike. It's not really an Apple Watch. It's more like a gizmo or something. So then if they don't have texting ability or internet or any of those things, some of them need like wifi to be enabled, then you'd have educators saying, is that an iPhone watch or is that a gizmo watch?
More watches. My only point is if we're gonna do this.
Hard when you have kids traveling back.
You know, you know exactly what's gonna happen. They're all gonna get a watch and they're gonna be doing what we don't want them to do anyway. Why are we gonna allow that? I don't know why.
I just think it's harder to.
Well, maybe ask, ask.
Yeah, it's a lot harder.
What they're thinking of it, you know? But if you do it and you're, you're strong with it and you've got fidelity and the batching of the school committee.
Don't wear to school. They're not allowed in school then. Tell them they're.
They don't allow them during MCAS, right?
For a reason.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we need the teachers to sign on to this with us. We need the buy-in from the teachers and that's kind of, that's a heavy lift to ask teachers, okay?
Well.
It is.
But not if we set the tone. My worry is that some teachers won't follow. They'll be like, whatever, keep your phone. And then they're the cool teacher and the one who.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want that, right?
Then that's on us.
But, but it's gonna happen, Gordon, because they're wearing hats.
Right.
And we know we have hats.
And they should be compliant. And we had a couple of years there.
I don't know why it's okay. Oh, this teacher gets to not. Well, how, they're not, they don't get to decide that.
They should be, the team is behind it and then, and that's not on.
Right, and so one of the things we have to talk about is, is that the enforcement by us is we're walking through rooms and you notice it.
Right. And you need to follow up on it.
The kids will do it. That's just it. You know, I think during COVID, I, I know, like, like, for instance, the hats, the high school, I mean, how many of these poor kids, they're here, they're barely here, they're whatever. I think a lot of things, admittedly, and it's okay, just let's give these kids a break. Let's get them into school. Let's, you know, rally around them. But now we're back to normal and there's no more excuses.
We should have never slacked. Why are we slacking rules? Rules are rules for a reason. Once you slack on rules, you never get it back. I don't, I don't understand that.
And maybe that needs to be addressed in terms of, everybody needs to understand. I mean, I know the code of conduct goes out every year, but sometimes I don't think the code of conduct follows the, the, the schools, you know.
Should be the schools.
Yeah, but each individual school, it doesn't necessarily vibe. It's not all the same. Like, I, I think like, sometimes I was looking, one time, I can't even think of what it was, and I think it was the dress code, which is pretty lax. Didn't match up with something else and I, and it should have.
Schools handbook?
The handbook, probably, yeah.
Should.
Yeah, well, I.
What about if we make a plan to collect some data several months in and see how teachers are feeling? Are kids going, circumventing the pouch rule and sitting on their watch all morning or?
And I, I understand that, but I'm just worried that we won't, we'll have some staff without the buy-in and they're not gonna give us any data because they're gonna be content with how their classroom is operating, but it's for us to make the decision.
They're the adult in the room. They're getting paid by us to do their job. And the job is tell the kids to put the phone in the pouch. And this is what happened last time. Then this is what they, these kids were saying to us, the students. If we don't make it the priority, the teachers are gonna let it slide. And so it's from the top down's gotta be like, this is what it is. So there's no wishy-washiness.
Right.
And it's our fault. You know, it, it comes from us and not being more aggressive toward it.
Well, I don't know if aggressive. There has to be a universal buy-in.
I guess aggressive is not the, the right word, but I'm saying that.
But I.
It's.
It can be, I am, but there can also be things that come from the top down that you just have to do because it's your job to do it. Whether they agree with it or not, like, if you're, the person you work for tells you to do something a certain way.
Like you have a curriculum, you have to teach the curriculum based on the state standards. Our school standards are this happens, and I think that they will understand that.
I think it's important for teachers to be, I think you'll get more of the buy-in, which will lead to a more productive result if they, if they're a part of the conversation. Teachers and.
How do we get them a part of the conversation?
I don't know. Maybe we bring some teachers in and sit on a, sit in a, you know, a little subcommittee with us. I don't know. I could ask at the next collaborative meeting too. I mean, that's a cross-section of all the schools.
Yeah, that might be helpful too.
At least just to kind of get us.
Bring it up in there and see how they, we have one meeting left, but I can certainly bring it up at the last meeting and then maybe have it move forward to future meetings, but. Because it is, like, it's a hassle. It's hard. It's gonna, it's hard for the teachers.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Or maybe it's something.
Only if, uh, relax on it, is it hard. If it's like cut and dry, your phone goes in the pocket or you're not coming in my room, it's, that's, it's easy.
The beginning is hard. It's a domino effect. But then, once it becomes part of the culture, it'll be, probably be a relief for a lot of teachers.
Uh huh.
I would think. It'd be a shift at the onset. Yes, a lot of accountability, like, for them and then probably the main office.
One-to-one, it was tough, because remember, I remember even sometimes you go in there as a parent and there'd be like, uh, an assembly they would have for parents for whatever, and they'd be like, oh, pull out your phones. We're gonna do a survey with the phone.
Which you do see in some of the policies that they allow for that.
Yes.
But you're right, now.
So now they have a computer and you could do all that stuff, whether it's as fun or not, you could do it all on that computer. So there's no need for it anymore.
Do kids all have their computers with them every single day?
Supposed to.
Supposed to.
Yeah, they're supposed to, but if they don't.
Okay.
There's loners in the library.
There's loners. We don't belong ourselves. There are loners.
Other piece too is that, I think one of the things that I noticed was, um, Agawam is, and their policy is very clear about expectations for employees. So if we have students having to put their phones out of sight, we have to just be careful with our messaging to our faculty as well. So.
Good point.
If they are actively using their phone potentially or things along those lines during class, which happens, emergencies happen, people have families, they have commitments, I understand that, but might just have to think about some language as, as well, because you're holding the kids accountable and maybe yourself is on the phone.
And it's the emergency thing that I think a lot of parents get hung up on with their kids, but if we say we're allowing, uh, staff to use it for emergencies, I think that's a slippery slope, so.
We've just got to, well, about that, like.
What does Agawam say? I didn't read their policy specifically.
Um, it has granted permission to possess, possess and use cellphones and personal computing devices. I'm assuming that stands for.
Communication device.
Communication devices in the official job capacity, your job description. Um, so. And if there is an emergency, I mean, obviously a true emergency, you can contact the school, but the students are gonna be getting their phones at the end of class anyways, so they'll have an opportunity
Right.
shortly to check if there's an emergency message or something. But I just think if we're asking the students to follow line, we have to be careful with the language around educators so that they're not being grant.
But I don't disagree with that at all at any level, other than I have to say, they are, they are, they shouldn't have them out, but then you also sit there and you're like, okay, the kids are able to get on their phones in the middle of this, that, and the other thing. And when does that educator, are they allowed to take it out? You know, so we have to cognizant of the fact that they are the adult. It shouldn't be in there because their job, they're supposed to be doing their job, not playing on their phone, but.
Certainly add language to our policy.
You know, you also know that they are gonna look at their phone in between classes or whatever and, and that, you know, you don't want to make them feel like as the adult in the room, they've got less rights than the kids.
Right.
You understand?
I don't think it's, I think it's careful not to be punitive in nature, but we also have to set the examples as the individuals responsible for, I don't want to say enforcing, like respecting the policy and the way it's written. We have to then set the example too, as the adult in the room, that if I'm telling you to put your phone it's not, it's a little bit of a contradiction if I'm sitting there checking every.
I know. I'll admit, I've done it. There's some days when I have it in my pot, you're waiting for that phone call or whatever it is and, um, I'm not gonna say I've never done it, so.
All right, so you're gonna talk.
I'll talk. Yep, I'll talk.
What if you let them know before, like whoever sets up the agenda for that group, if they know and they let the whole team, you know, the whole group know prior to you might discuss it, maybe they'll have ideas for it, so you don't have to wait till next year.
Shy group, they'll have ideas.
Okay, but you know, I, I guess I'm saying if it's.
You have it.
In the agenda to discuss. And then they'll know that you're gonna discuss it that.
I can send something to Chris.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Um, I mean, I think you'll get something from the high school folks and, um,
No.
We're supposed to get, uh,
Nobody.
But maybe we can invite.
Now, at the elementary, it's just in their backpack out of sight all day, right?
Yeah, the elementary's aren't, don't have any problems with the phones. I mean, I think if we, if we're doing a pilot, I would stick to middle and high.
I guess that's why I, I was surprised, because I was like, just leave it in your backpack. Like, just don't bring it out during class.
Has that expectation. They're supposed to have them in their backpack.
Supposed to, yeah, but they're, this would, you know, be helpful. They can, if, if it's not a problem, they don't have it, then okay, fine. If you don't have it, nothing goes in there, but better not see it.
They have them out. The students have them out. We've worked, working, it's on the desk.
I would say middle.
Yeah, that shouldn't be.
But I think even in the middle school, they may have them at lunch.
Pretty swiftly around middle of year, so put some corrective practices in place where they were either collecting them and using pouches or they were in backpacks. And they sent notification home to them. And if your child has a cellphone during the day, we're done with the warnings. You will be asked to come and they definitely made a shift.
That's good.
You know, COVID is done.
Yeah, yeah.
And we need to start to go back to where we were.
Good.
So, right, am I, no, am I sending that correct now? Like, well, I do think it's still probably in some situations problematic, but they were, they did crack down. Yeah, they did crack down. Right after the winter break.
I remember the, the beauty of it, I know this is totally kind of off-topic, is you send your children to school, you know they're warm and safe and dry, being taken care of. And then my guys didn't get a phone until they were second semester freshmen. They shared a flip phone. All of a sudden, the peace and quiet of not having to hear your children for the whole day ended. Because they would text me like all frickin' day long and I'm sitting there like, don't you have a class you're in right now? But it was kind of nice to know your kids are warm, safe and dry and can't get in contact with.
That's right.
Anyways.
The good old days.
Yeah, I know, back to jewelry phones and whatnot.
Uh, do we need any input from the leadership team? You spoke with them already, but.
I'll, I'll bring it up on Thursday again, just to let them know where we are and.
What are the weird sheets?
They were in support of, um, you know, doing a pilot of
Oh, okay.
Phone trees. And the middle school, obviously, had already started to crack down a little bit. But I'd be interested to see, um, Sarah's got a very good point. The collaborative committee may have some interesting thoughts on the whole thing.
When is that meeting?
Next week.
Next. Because we only have one more meeting before summer break.
We're on the 26th, so we have some time.
Next week.
Yeah. Thirteen, so we'll have time.
Uh, speaking of the 26th, I may not be here. That's not here. Are the three of you here to have a quorum on the 26th?
I'm here.
Yes.
Okay. I'm coaching summer soccer and it's my favorite thing in the world to do, so I may choose.
I was thinking it's not the 19th, it's.
19th's the holiday.
It's Juneteenth.
Oh, so it's not the 20th. You're skipping that whole week and the 26th. Okay, okay.
Oh, it's the 26th.
26th.
I was thinking the 19th, I might be here.
The 19th's the holiday, so.
Yeah, it's a holiday, 26th.
What's the holiday? Oh, Juneteenth. Yeah, I know, I know. As soon as I said.
And then our July meeting is the third, right?
Yep. Morning. Are we morning or are we night?
I don't remember.
Morning.
It was.
We are morning.
Seven thirty, I think.
Thirty, I thought.
It was early.
Seven thirty.
I didn't schedule this.
I didn't schedule this.
Scheduling that, the chair?
What time? I'm up at five, so I'll be here.
I'm, I'm up two.
By four, we have to get a rest for the parade.
Dirty.
Okay. Good discussion. We'll have some more input. We should have a.
Do you want me to draft something?
Well, the only issue is if we want to have this for August.
Right. So I'll draft something. We'll get, we'll get feedback and then we can, um.
Use that to help us.
Yeah, we'll use that plus any more the leadership team wants to give us. As I do know, um, you know, Minichog may have some more information they can give us off their pilot. Um, we just didn't get text.
And if it's a pilot, we wouldn't be putting it into policy. We're, so we don't have to.
Oh, but don't we need a policy to lean on?
We have a policy that says that they should be off and away during instructional time.
Yeah, we're trying to think about practices.
What we're saying is that, okay, this is not happening maybe as often as we would like it to happen. So we're gonna add this to, and see if this helps us. And we're all gonna start with the same message.
Okay.
But that's.
Who's, have teachers complained about it? Have, um, leadership team, have they complained about it?
So, yeah, we started the discussion actually last year and, um. The leadership team was not seeing it as much of an issue last year as I think they're starting to see it this year. Um, I would say it's probably mixed in terms of, you're not going to get a hundred percent saying, yep, we should have this. This is what it should look like. It's going to be closer to that fifty fifty. You, you know, you may have sixty on the side of right now, I need some help. Let's try this. But there are teachers who have done it on their own and been doing it all year.
Yeah.
Uh, and there are, um, some who have just started to get into it. Um, and then, you know, I've gotten a few emails from folks who have said. You know, hey, this would be really be a district policy, but, but not, you know, fifty emails. I've gotten like three.
And it would help them, I think. It was school-wide. It's just when you walk in, any room you walk in, yeah.
And the Chromebooks are distracting enough. I mean, I know when I'm in a classroom and kids are supposed to be, I'm not a fan of using them for a lot of stuff, but. When the kids are supposed to be doing something, you have to be in the back of the classroom, sitting at the table, watching, because they, they.
Jump on and off.
They jump on and off so fast.
They actually, uh, we, we do have the capability. Not many teachers use it. You can freeze the screens.
Oh, really?
Freeze everyone's screen in a minute, a moment in time and then look at them all?
Uh, no, you can, no, what you can do is say, okay, we're on this page and this freezes, so they can't go anywhere else. But you have to, you know, it's, it's a.
But can they actively?
You have to enable it, right?
Yeah, and, but they can't actively work on a page or can they work on that? Yeah.
You want to focus on this right now? I don't want you on your screens looking at multiple things. I need you up here. I mean, I actually use it, not the frozen screen, but what I'll say to the leadership team is if I'm starting to see a meeting go and I'm losing them, not just go, okay, let's take a break and get a donut. Different, but, um, I tell them, screen's down. And I'll say, okay, hey, screen's down. You need, I need all your eyes for a moment. You know, it's just different ways you want to engage because people, let's face it, our students now have grown up with all of this in front of them all the time. So it's, it's just those subtle cues and the habits that you have to teach to.
This may give them some reprieve from that very thing.
Yeah.
I mentioned last meeting in general that the complaints that I've gotten have all been from parents.
Right.
Saying like, my, my kid is like reporting to me that he's sitting on it, like sitting on his phone and during class, like things like that. And so I think I've received four emails in the past several months and. Up, all of them have been from like parents that were concerned.
And there, there's some gaming going on in the phones too.
Yeah, that makes sense too.
That was, I think, the biggest change for the leadership team was they started to realize how much gaming is going on on the phones. And so they're like, hmm, we gotta start cracking down on this.
And I don't know what our district does so much in terms of using the physical Chromebooks during the day for like doing extra math or for doing, you know, a Kahoot or for doing whatever, whatever they might do, but. I, I, I kind of hope that moving forward, it's used less and less for certain things because. I think they're on those screens a lot. And, you know, you talk about the AI and all this other kind of stuff. And you were saying there's ways around how you word questions and stuff like that. It just seems like it's, it's. More and more every year. That's, I'm not, I don't know what's happening in our classrooms directly, but.
I think.
Cause I know the cricket.
Writing in a lesson plan is, is something that just makes the lesson plan better.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you're moving them quickly through things and there are times where you can say, screen's down, this is what we're focused on. And that's, you know, for X amount of time. And then you move through and you're using the Chromebook as a resource for something else.
And I know the curriculum's online too. It's physically.
And there's a lot of resources that we, we now use on the Chromebooks that are loaded on there. I mean, the elementary teachers probably do it the best because they're moving through so many subjects on it in, in the same classroom that. They have everything set in terms of, okay, this is when we're using this resource. And the students follow. It's, it's setting the structure.
Little kids are good. You do what they're supposed to do. Usually.
And then they get a voice.
All good. So, okay. We'll, we'll, uh, get as much feedback as we can to put a draft together.
Okay.
For the 26th or a pilot of some.
So it'll be a draft for the pilot.
Yeah.
Not a policy per se.
I think it can eventually, um, move into a policy, but you could use next year as your way age that.
Now, would you do one reading on that? Or can you do one reading on a draft so that you guys can have it ready and they know what's coming at them?
Yeah, we would need to do some messaging and we would do some purchasing.
Wait till August, they're not going to have time to think through.
Yes, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to lock this in next meeting.
Okay, okay. Good. I'll write fast. Okay, excellent. Thank you all for that discussion. We have a request from the Rotary Club for their annual concert series.
Email here online as well.
Oh, okay.
Sent an email saying he's gonna be.
Yeah. Is Kevin there?
Is this on?
It is on.
It is on, yep.
We, can you want to bring him in, Tom? Thank you, sir.
Hey, Kevin, I think you're on mute. There you go. Perfect. Thanks for zooming in tonight.
My pleasure. Thanks for considering our request.
You bet. You've got, uh, we, we have in front of us the dates that you're requesting. Uh, you'll be in the same place as the normal setup.
Correct. Yeah, same thing as we do every year, Wednesday night concerts starting June 28th. Um, going through mid-August and then with our fourth of July concert on, uh, July 3rd with fireworks after that.
Great. And you've got rain dates scheduled for most of them as well.
The Thursday afternoon.
Yep. Kevin, where do folks find these dates? So they're publishing the reminder, I bet, once at least.
Yeah, we have schedule cards that we listed all around town in the reminder. We have our Facebook page. Um, we're really in a lot of promotion. We're going to be on WWLP, um, Western Mass News. We're putting it all out there.
Awesome. It certainly is a treasure for this community. Uh, it's a topic that comes up many times in our building committee meetings because we're not forgetting. A spot for the new, for the, a new spot for the concert series. So please know that we, we, we are considering that moving forward as well. So.
We're also preparing contingencies for what may happen in the future.
Great. Awesome. Any questions or thoughts or concerns?
Thank you for continuing to do it.
I know. It's a lot of work, work.
Okay, then with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the schedule as presented.
Okay, I move to approve the Rotary Club of Eastside Meadows Summer Concert Series schedule as presented.
You also have fireworks.
Oh, and to include the fireworks celebration on the 3rd of July.
Okay, motion made by Beth. Second by Amy. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Okay, Kevin, you're up and running.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for zooming in tonight. Thank you. Have a good one. Okay. Well, seven point three, we have a discussion on creating a cyber and technology committee. This was something also that I wanted to just start to talk about. Certainly. None of us need more committees. Um, but as we were just saying, AI, uh, coming along, uh, fast, it seems like all of a sudden. I feel like as a district, we want to be prepared and just want to have a group kind of working on this so that we have some knowledge base. Cause I don't have a lot of, a lot of knowledge base. So. I don't know how we go about it and what kind of group that might be or what it is or just a kind of. I don't know. I, I really don't know where we go with it. I just don't want to be left behind in the whole situation.
Ryan be a good resource.
Oh, I would think you would want Ryan on it.
I'm sure you'd love to have another committee, but I'd be able to help you think about who else you might want on it. And maybe somebody from the community that has a lot of.
Some expertise.
Expertise. If we know anybody, I don't know how you find that.
Recruit?
Yeah.
Actually, I, I just, I believe it's going to become a, a huge, you know, almost overwhelming quickly and, uh, better for us to start to at least talk about it. It might have some policy implications, certainly will, I believe.
Would it make sense? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just agreeing with you.
Yeah. Um, possibly, if you're not starting the committee to the fall, would it make sense maybe to invite. Ryan to a fall meeting and we start, that gives us also a little bit of planning time in terms of what we are doing currently. Um, we do have a subscription to turnitindotcom. Which has been used predominantly for plagiarism or for plagiarism. And they're supposed to be up on AI. I think really the reality is they're, they're trying to catch up as much as we're trying to understand it. And, and so. You know, we're going to learn, we still have the subscription, so we're going to learn more, I think, through them. Think, uh, to your point, last meeting around professional development, we're going to probably need some of that. So maybe it's worth starting that discussion in a formal meeting and then figuring out what does that committee look like.
Yeah.
And maybe we can look at our, during our reorganization meeting, like look at some of the committees that exist. And maybe it's not an additional committee, but flagging some teams that already are in existence and making it one of their. Items. Like if we're talking about like student health and wellness, well. There's a committee that addresses those concerns. Like maybe this needs to be a function of that. If it's a committee, like the collaborative committee that. Has ties to Gordon, teachers and sometimes Heather, like that might be another committee because you might be able to tackle concerns around policies, concerns around professional development. It might just be that. It needs to come more to the forefront of some committees rather than in another one in addition.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Yeah. Oh, and it might, one might lead to the other potentially because I don't know where we're going with this. Yeah, but that's, that's a good, because we could use the resources we have. Already in different realms for that discussion and just to start the discussion.
Right.
Yeah, I like that. Okay. All right. So we'll look to continue to work on it and, um.
I'll talk to Ryan about, uh, you know, joining us. Um, for a future meeting, just to round this, see what he knows. And, you know, maybe they're talking, I'm sure they're talking about it with, um, area IT directors.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Crazy world.
Yeah, and I wonder if, uh, uh. The Massachusetts, uh, School Committee Association would have, uh, in there for, for, you know, I don't know. I, I feel like.
Hot topic.
I feel like it's a hot topic all of a sudden.
All of a sudden it is. I agree.
So if we could get some guidance or just what we're up against, because I, I think it's going to change how we all live. Really, it's gonna have that kind of impact. I'm gonna buy twenty acres in the woods myself.
I know. I told you, I'm on it.
They may have some workshops and then maybe that's something, or maybe there's somebody on their staff at MASC that could come and even do a presentation for us or offer like a, some kind of professional development as committee.
We can reach out and ask. Oh, great. Okay.
Superintendent Self-Evaluation.
So, uh, given the second to last meeting before reorganization in July, um, I wanted to update. The document, basically going through all the goals and, um, things that have happened this year, more to happen. We do have two weeks, less than two weeks, but, uh. Uh, some, you know, we're still collecting for the end of the year, um, presentation. We're still collecting data and so forth. So I don't have all of that in here. But what I will do is, um, update the folders so that you have that in the shared, uh, folder for all of you. So you have the document and then. Updated evidence folders. And then certainly, um, if anybody wants to sit down between now and the 26th and go through things, I'd be happy to do that. They know it's a, it's a lot of writing. And I can't get the Desi form to, so I apologize for the big gaps where you have a page.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It, it won't. I was gonna say stupid line, but it's a very intelligent line. So it's more intelligent than I. But it captures, um, obviously the district goals and then my individual goals and where we are and what, what's the date.
So we'll bring this back.
I didn't put the pool.
Twenty six.
Add it, add it in there.
Well, this will be on the agenda of the 26th.
Yes.
Hey, does anybody have anything else this evening? Beth, we're gonna miss you.
I know. I, I'll be back though, believe me.
Yeah, you will. Yeah, we're gonna see you. We got a long way to go.
I know. It's been a ride.
Yeah. All your efforts. Hey, with that, we have come to our conclusion. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Beth. Thank you, Beth.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. We are adjourned.